I'm gonna be here till 10 o'clock tonight. Yeah?
Okay.
Give me the nod when you're ready, Kyle. Is that enough? Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the September 8, 2025 Board of Public Works and Safety Meeting. You good? Uh, roll call, please.
Nelson, call.
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Milner?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Listonberger?
Here.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, in favor, say aye.
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 Does opposed, no, nay? Good.
Mayor? Roll call is because Don's roll call.
I'm sorry?
Roll call is because Don is your roll call.
Okay. Yes. All right. Um, anything from the, uh, board members this evening? Anything? Don, have anything for us?
I do not, thank you.
And then we'll jump right into our department heads. Donnie? Anything this evening?
Ladies and gentlemen, I have two items tonight. Uh, the first one is the, uh, we've kind of revisited the detention basin over by the neighborhood center. And, uh, we've had it for a little over a year now. And, uh, we do have some areas which are continuously wet. And, uh, we basically cannot, uh, maintain it properly. And, uh, so we've been working with Jody, um, Overmeyer from the, uh, Marshall County Soil and Water Conservation District. And, uh, she's, uh, brought up a proposal for us. And, uh, to, uh, that south end, plant some, uh, native, uh, grasses and some plants that, uh, would, uh, fit the area very nicely. And, uh, would also assist in, in some of our long-term maintenance. The, uh, proposal that she has provided is, uh, fourteen thousand, two hundred dollars for the installation of the rain garden. And, uh, one-time maintenance fee of four thousand dollars. But the good part of that is, is that, uh, they're willing to, uh, split this fifty-fifty with us. So, we could have those improvements, uh, for approximately nine thousand, one hundred dollars. And, uh, I think it would be a benefit. Uh, we also, uh, have intentions of utilizing that with some signage which identifies the native plants and so on for the public. Uh, that also, uh, provides, uh, public education requirement that we have in our MS4 program. Uh, our stormwater program. So there's multiple benefits, and I don't think we're gonna get a better deal than that. Uh, right now, I'm just asking for permission to proceed with this, uh, proposal.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
How about discussion?
Oh, any, yeah, any discussion, you got questions?
I do have a question. You said one-time maintenance of four thousand. Does that mean annually?
One time, uh, during the first year of growth, so that they get everything, uh, active and healthy. And then at that point, then we would be trained to go in there occasionally and, um, bring out the, uh, invasive plants and things like that that shouldn't be there, so.
And that'll...
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Call.
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, next item I have is an update on the, uh, water main project and the, uh, railroad permit. Um, on August 28th, uh, we did receive the, uh, ride-of-entry agreement from the railroad, uh, from Genesee in Wyoming, who's subleasing it from CSX. Um, but, uh, they put a time limit on it of sixty days. And, uh, we've canceled out, um, with our subcontractor so many times that the schedule's filled in. And so now they can't get to us until the end of the year. Um, so I have already started the process of doing an extension. Uh, but they did, uh, inform us that, uh, additional fees may be associated with the extension, so. It's, uh, can't get this done soon enough. Just a, just a brief update on the progress of that, so. Jefferson Street's, uh, moving at a snail's pace. And, uh, um, very disappointed in the, uh,
Yeah.
speed of it and the inconvenience that the public has constantly had. But, um, we're, uh, actually working with them closely to try to speed things up. And, uh, um, I hate to say it, but if it was our own job, we'd probably have done it a long time ago, just with our own staff, so. But, I better stop there, so. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
All right, well, thanks. Thank you, Donnie. Dan, anything this evening?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
All right. Dennis? Don't even need to ask you up. Just come automatically every week.
At some point, I'm hoping that I don't have to come up on that.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna switch the order on this a little bit. 516 Pennsylvania Avenue, not really hearing. It's more just informing you guys of what is happening there. Property owner has not complied with anything. Refuses mail, this is the reason I have to publish it. Still has not complied. I would like to impose a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine. And hopefully he gets something accomplished. I'm gonna give him a fifteen-day notice. He does not comply within that fifteen days with the twenty-five-hundred-dollar fine. I will have no choice but to shut down his second story. Hearing on lot 228 in North Gate Travel Park. I don't believe the property owner is here, um, or the unit owner is here. I did speak with the property owner today. They are actually, they came, had their contractor come in, and they pulled seven demolition permits. The five original plus the two that were privately owned. They, the park plans on demoing all seven of those units out, so. That's pretty much it.
Well, that's good news.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
I believe two weeks ago that we asked Abraham to give a, a time, timeline on getting these projects done. The mowing, uh, everything. Did he give you that?
He did not, he did call me today, apologized that, 'cause we, we spoke several times since the last meeting. And he did call today, apologized that he did not get it sent out. Ferbally informed me that they will be having somebody demo out those units. He was gonna talk to his contractor to see if they could clean up some of the debris from, that's left on some of the other lots from apparently a past home that got demoed out. He was kind of worried about fixing that, um, catch basin in the road. Because basically, they bought this park, didn't realize how much money they were gonna have to dump into it right off the bat, and they're running out of money. And he wanted to know if he could just basically rope it off and put that on the spring agenda to where they could have that done with the roads.
I still think they need to give you a timeline.
I, I agree.
Including those items as well.
I agree. I, I did inform him that I still need it in writing. So. But...
Dennis, this, uh, I, I agree with Dave, uh, that, and you and I talked about this earlier this afternoon, that the plan needs to come through. It needs to be agreed upon by you and, between you and him. And we also know that things change, and as, as the needs change, the plan needs to be updated with the revised states each and every time. And I, I would trust that he would be in agreement with that.
I would think, by the way I talk, the way he talked this morning, when I talked with him, he, it sounds like he will be agreeable. He was mainly worried about that catch basin and not being able to get it done this year. He wanted to know if he could just put a cone on it. And I was like, you had a cone on it the first time I went in there, the cone is no longer there. So he was wanting to know if he could just make some kind of framework to set around it, put some caution tape, something to that effect.
They need some reflective...
Correct.
You know, I mean, it's, somebody hits that now, they're gonna do major damage to the museum.
Yes. Yes.
Red Rock ever pay for their fine?
No.
I think we ought to do something about that.
It's...
Well, I don't know what we can do.
Uh, believe a lien, but I can't remember. But that's a lot of liens for that. I'll have to look. I don't remember if I put a lien on that one or not.
If that's what, to get it paid, I'm gonna suggest we do so. If not, let them double court over.
Here.
They need to follow us up.
Yep. I'll follow up with Dennis and see what the status is on that, and we'll figure out the best way to take action.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Do we need, uh, some kind of motion for the fine on 516?
Uh...
You would ask for it, but we never talked about it.
Well, that's the maximum amount.
Technically, you don't have to take any action. He has discretion to oppose the fine. Um, if the owner wants to appeal the fine, they would come back to you, and you can decide whether to affirm it or change it.
One reason I do the maximum amount, this, this property owner has been multiple times over the years, so.
Not just this prop, oh, the properties of his, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, this is the third time.
The other thing is just technically for, uh, 1535 North Michigan, lot 228. Um, even though Dennis has indicated that the property owner intends to demolish that, I would recommend that you take some action, because it was technically scheduled for a hearing tonight. Um, again, this is similar to the previous hearings, that Dennis can present any information he has. If the, um, owner is here and wants to make any presentation, they can. And then your options are to either affirm the order, rescind the order, or modify the order. But I would recommend that you take some action. Or if you choose, you can simply, um, continue the hearing till a later meeting pending the demolition. But I would recommend that you take some action, so that if we have to follow up, we don't have to re-advertise for the hearing.
Well, I'll make a motion to, um, the order.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Call?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Yes.
That is all I have, thank you.
Okay. Chief Bell?
Good evening. Uh, first of all, I just want to say, uh, our meetings with Structure Point have been going really well as far as doing some planning on new stations and such. It's been really encouraging to meet with them and see what the potential is for us, uh, as we go forward, so. I think Chief Weir probably shares that with me also, but, um, the other thing I want to do is just, um, probably clear up some concerns from a couple of weeks ago. Um, I, I, uh, mentioned some things about the house fire we were on, and, um, by no means did I say that to demean anyone or any group, um, especially the volunteers. That was just making a statement to let you know that we need help in one way, shape, or another. We need, we need help, um, with personnel, we need help with, uh, call volumes that we have, the increase in call volumes. So, um, it wasn't a bash on anybody in particular at all, it was just strictly, we need help, so. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Chief Weir?
I have nothing.
Jim Marquett?
I have nothing, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Mike Collins?
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
There you are. Okay. I didn't see you. Mike Height?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor, thanks for asking.
Mr. Shealy?
I want to give you a quick update on our paved taxiway. The, um, paving contractor finished up with edge grading today. Um, they've made the place look very nice. They've got, uh, a couple of days of cleanup in their staging construction area, um, to level off some of the dirt mounds. They're gonna be stockpiling the stone that they placed for their parking area for their equipment. So we're gonna have a large stockpile of stone that other departments are welcome to as they need. Um, and, uh, there, another contractor's finishing up, closing up our fence where they'd open it up for, um, drainage. Uh, there'll be pouring concrete, I expect tomorrow, for the new fence posts that they're putting in. Um, Hydroseed Company should be in here in the next few days, and then it'll be turned over to the lighting contractor. So, I'm actually hoping that possibly later this week, I'll be able to temporarily open it up for use, and it looks wonderful. The, the contractor started out on my bad side at the beginning of the summer by delaying a month, but they've more than made up for it with the job that they've done and the extra work they've done for us to, to help make the place nice. So, we're really pretty sure the milestone's done.
How many years have you been working on this?
I asked, I asked for it seven years ago.
Yeah.
Took a couple of years to get the first grant, and then four to get the second one. So, finally, finally coming to the end here. I hope to have a, um, grand opening in the next thirty days or so with a ribbon cutting, probably on a Saturday morning at the request of the Board of Aviation, so that some of them could be there that wouldn't normally be able to be there. So, we'll let you know about that.
Great, yeah.
Oh, and, uh, all of the, um, grant has been signed by the city attorney and the president of the Board of Aviation for our snow removal equipment, so that's in process as well.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. I'm gonna get out and see that, I've been meaning to try to get out there.
Missed you on Blueberry Moon.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a couple of items for you. The first is Executive Order 2025 dash zero three regarding use of water tower. Uh, this request came in a little late, I don't know if they forgot about it, but, uh, it's the same request every year. And because it's been done every year, uh, the mayor issued an executive order to allow for it. And we're just asking you to ratify that order tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Call?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Abstain. I made, was my executive order, I did?
You can vote your...
Okay. Whichever. Text.
Did you know you issued that executive order?
Yes, I did know. Of course I did know. Of course.
Um, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, proposal for some streetlights in front of the new Water Street townhomes. Uh, this really goes back a little ways. Uh, the mayor, uh, noticed that the old poles that were there with the Cobra lights were kind of unsightly for the new development, and NIPSCO pretty quickly removed those. Um, did a little investigation and, and asked Kevin Berger to look into what it would take to put up some streetlights to match what is farther down Water Street across from River Park Square. And so, after some research, we got the, this proposal back from Easterday Construction. Um, I talked to the clerk treasurer, and she believes that there may be just enough money in the budget from, uh, Power and Lights to cover this cost. We hope so, as long as there's no emergencies between now and the end of the year. So, uh, and they want to get this done pretty quickly, because they are preparing to put in the new sidewalk. So they should do the electrical and, uh, get this all ready for the street lamps before they pour that sidewalk. So we're asking you to approve this, uh, proposal to install street lamps on Water Street in front of the new townhomes.
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Call?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Yes.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, you have one request this evening from Interland Bookery. Uh, he would like to occupy two parking spaces in front of Ivy Terra Plant Cafe at 113 East La Porte Street on September 20th, 2025. And Joseph is here, if you could please come up and answer any questions.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
What you got going?
Uh, I have a mobile bookstore.
Oh, okay.
In a sixteen-foot enclosed trailer. And I was chatting with Sarah and Ron from Ivy Terra. Um, and we wanted to have a little get-together where we could cross-promote each other's businesses. Um, so I'm requesting two parking spaces to hold the mobile bookstore.
For how long will it be, did you say?
Just on the 20th of September. From, the event's from eight to two, so, uh, maybe six to three, or seven to three.
Yeah. Get there early, get set up.
Correct.
I would make a motion that we accept that request.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Call?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Approval claims, anybody want to make a motion? Got a motion?
Second.
Third.
Second and a third. Any further discussion?
Go ahead, four.
Roll call vote, please.
Call?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Yes.
Number nine? No, no. Except, we need acceptance of communications.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Call?
Yep.
Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Yep. Now you can do that. Thank you. I heard a second. I heard a second, so come on. I'd like to call to order the September 8, 2025, common council meeting. Councilman Starr, would you leave us in a prayer, please?
We should pray with me. Dear grateful we are to you, loving God, for this beautiful weather that we have been experiencing. We thank you for all the blessings that we have of our friends, our family, and our coworkers. Be with us just now as we remember the heroes of 911. Those who were the professionals and those who were the civilians. We ask for the safety of our own emergency responders in their lines of duty as they protect the citizens of our city and our county and area. We ask for guidance and wisdom as we address our business for this evening. We lift up all leaders, those of our state, those of our county and country, those of the world, and those of our city. We pray for all those who are lonely, lost, or in pain. We ask you to bless all of us here in this meeting and be with us as we go through this evening and get us home safely. These things we ask in your name, amen.
Amen. You're kindly joining the budget's legion. The budget's legion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilman Call?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Craplaw?
Here.
Longhead Becker?
Here.
Milner?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Good. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Sorry.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Call?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Craplaw?
Yes.
Longhead Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Glad you're here, Dwayne.
At least we're smiling. I think.
Okay, next up is our public hearing for the 2026 proposed budget. This hearing, how does this run? Do we have to open the?
Open the public hearing.
Yeah, entertain a motion to open.
Will you open the public hearing for 2026 proposed budget?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Call?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Craplaw?
Yes.
Longhead Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, we are in public hearing mode?
All right, so the 2026 budget. Do you want me to go by individual funds? Do you want me to total what the general fund is? Do you want me to? By the individual funds?
General, yeah, just.
So in the general fund, the engineering budget is $493,000, which includes the replacement of a 2011 vehicle. Building commissioner is $415,775, which also includes the replacement of a 2012 vehicle. The law department, $195,980. Mayor and council budget, $342,410. Financial board, $1,611,000. Sanitation, $802,515. Police department, $4,464,300. That includes the purchase of three vehicles, five body cams, eight tasers, eight portable radios. Fire department? That includes the replacement of a 2013 Explorer. Ten pagers, three air packs, five radios, eight turnout gear, and workout equipment. City properties, $570,100. City power and lights, $300,000. Animal welfare, $30,000. Garage and warehouse, $456,925. With a total general budget of $13,246,315. Motor vehicle highway, $3135,410, which includes operating equipment of $12,000. Replacement of a one-and-a-half-ton dump truck, a mower, and $50,000 for additional sidewalk improvements. Local building street for paving, $81,000. MVH restricted, also for paving, $215,000. The park department, $1,537,785, which includes $100,000 for restroom renovations. Equipment of a leaf sweeper, road crossing, paving. That's all. Cemetery, $509,950, which includes a military awning and gutters on a cemetery building. Aviation, $430,000, or, yeah, $430,105. Includes fencing and the rehab of the taxiway and a gear. Those are all on safe. Now, cum capable improvement, $17,300 for a mower at the cemetery. Cum cap development, $70,000. Those are all funds that are reported to the DLGF. There are several other funds that are home rule funds. Would you like me to go through those?
Yes.
Law enforcement and continuing education. Park non-reverting, $103,800. Defolium diversion, $3,000. Unsafe building fund, $20,200. Opiate unrestricted, $21,000 for potential new canine officer. Meaning the dog.
The dog.
MVH, or, sorry, opiate settlement restricted funds, $57,314. Semi-monetary gift fund, $46,000. And that's only if we receive gift funds to cover that. Park gift fund, $19,000, also if we receive donations to cover that. Transportation, $15,000, and that is given to the older adult services. Canine fund, $2,000. Aviation lottery, $283,350. Dare, $500. Community improvement, $50,000. I believe that covers it.
Yeah.
For a total budget of $28,332, or, $28,332,212. That is a decrease of 15.66% from 2023.
Say that again, I was handing candy to Dwayne.
That is a decrease in the budget amount from 2024 of 15.66%.
On, I read a movie by a police unit that says, "City building project seeking $213,225." I can't ask what that is.
Those are the redevelopment authority, I believe. Yeah, 313, 225. That's the redevelopment authority that is to cover the bond for the renovations of this building. Any other questions?
No, but I think our fire, are probably here to discuss some of this regarding the budget for the fire department. So I think, is this the time we should allow discussion?
It is a public hearing, so if you don't have any more questions for the clerk treasurer, you can open it up to anyone else who wants to, uh, theorize.
Anybody, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to note that the fire department's budget does not include any additional staff. We cannot increase the budget. There would have to be an additional appropriation in 2026.
So, um, I think that's why you're all here, right? So if anybody, or anybody else, uh, you're here, I want you to have the opportunity for sure to speak your mind. And mainly, you just heard the news that three additional staff members are not in the, uh, full-time staff members are not in the budget for 2026. So I want to hear from you. If you want to speak, fine. Either way, how you feel about it, this is your chance to let the council know what your thoughts are, so. So let me just say this. Because it's not in the budget as it sits today, does not mean that we can't look at this at some point during the year and do additional appropriation. So the door is not closed. I want you to understand that, that we can do this at a later date. So knowing that, I'd like to hear from you. If there's anything you want to say. I know, Steve, um, I get it.
Thank you for the time. I guess I just look at our city and we are, we continue to promote in a good way, I think. We continue to promote more industry, more housing, you know, more retail. And we want to bring more and more into our community, but I think our public services, our public safety, and I will say we have added some staff in the past couple of years. I am appreciative of that, but I think we are still behind in doing that. And so the more that we promote our city to make our population bigger and have an influx of people, whether they're living here or coming in to work, I think we need to make sure that our public safety, our public safety employees and departments are able to cover that. I, to me, we really need to increase our staff, but we also need to increase the number of volunteers that we have. That in itself is, that's just a numbers game. And you're only going to have, to be honest, you're only going to have a certain percentage when you have a group of volunteers, you're only going to have a certain percentage who are going to be able to attend calls regularly. And so when you only have nineteen on the roster, that doesn't leave very many people to regularly attend calls. When we used to have thirty-five to forty, the turnout was a lot better just by sheer numbers. And so we need to work on both sides of that as we, as we come forward. But we definitely can't just rely, the times are different. And we, people work out of town, bosses don't let people leave as readily as they used to, and during the day, Monday through Friday, is when we really hurt for extra help. And so that being said, that is where we also need to think about increasing our career staff. I've met with the leadership of the volunteers and we had a really good meeting about really working together and trying to just increase the department as a whole. It's not just, it's not just one side or the other, but we really want to work together and make sure that everything comes together because my goal, running this department and serving our community, is that those vehicles get out the door with qualified personnel as fast as they can. I don't care if the truck is full of volunteers, I don't care if the truck is full of career staff or a mix, as long as we're getting out the door as fast as we can to tend to our community, that's all that really matters. So that being said, I will say I was a little disappointed in how this process went because everyone was more than willing to share the proposed budget with me when there were three staff included. But then when it got changed and entered into gateway, I was never contacted once to talk about it. I was never told that it was taken out, it was just done. And I don't, very respectfully, I say, I don't understand how people can make decisions about what our department needs and what we don't need without talking to us. We came to each and every one of the council members last year with the help of our HR director. She put together a very good presentation and we talked to every one of you about our needs as a department and how it would work out, what it would cost, the different options that we had to do it. And in the end, it was basically ignored. And, you know, I felt really positive about it after we got done with all our talks. We spent a lot of time in that and I thank you all for taking time out of your day to meet with us when we did that. I just really want you to know that I hope, now that it's been sealed, that when 2026 comes around, that everyone takes a real hard look and possible additional appropriation. And I know it may not take place at the beginning of the year and I'm okay with that. But this last year when we hired, I was very budget-minded and I waited until nearly halfway through the year or better before we actually added our staff, even though the money was there to do it. So I hope that we can look at that again next year and eventually add that money, knowing that the city needs it. And even maybe if we needed to add, because I saw that the budget was cut for the volunteer compensation by a little bit, so we need to make sure that, that we have the money there. We may already have it there, but I just want to note that if we need to, we need to add, so. Any questions?
Thank you. Would anybody else, okay. Oh, sit down there, Art.
You can, you can come up here, but I want to point out that the reason the budget was cut greatly was because when I met with my Department of Local Government and Finance, budget rep, in the general fund, in order to fund the general fund, it needed to be cut by $792,000 because of our tax revenue. Our tax revenue next year is estimated at $10 million. We have a $28 million budget. That is why we can't sustain. That is why we can't sustain what we're doing.
I think everybody knows me, my name is Art Jacobs. I've been a volunteer firefighter in town for a long time and been blessed actually to help teach and train each of the firefighters here, except for two, two great hires that we hired from out of our town, Cole and John, phenomenal hires. Um, Steve's right, we did meet. We need a lot of representation from the volunteers and support and knowledge from you guys. We need help. We get, we don't get volunteers. We have eighteen, we need forty, thirty-eight, somewhere in there. It's hard, it's hard to attract people to do what we do. Get up at two o'clock in the morning, work until six-thirty, fight in a fire and then drive to Franklin, Indiana, work all day and drive back home that night. We have to work together. We're one department, full-time volunteers. We have to be one department, we're one department. There's not a person in here wearing a blue fire department shirt that I'm not deeply embedded to with as a friendship. So we are very, very close. But we also have to continue to thank you the city. At some point in time, we don't have the same type of, uh, support and volunteers that we used to have. You know, it's hard to find people to do what I just talked about. It's hard, it's hard for people to do with young kids. So we do have to grow the staff, we have to grow the staff. But growing the staff, we also have to work with the volunteers to continue because you're going to have fifteen or twenty full-time people per shift before they'll be able to handle what we handle. So we gotta grow that in increments and we have to work together. What I would suggest is the council is somehow, I mean, you guys have to do things and open forums and things and that's great. Bring us all together, let's talk about it and see. And I can appreciate the budget, that's why the volunteers got to step up. We got to step up and help and support these guys. So I tell you what, when you're out there, I don't care what kind of incident, it could be somebody in the river, it can be a car crash, it could be somebody having a medical issue. When these guys show up, we've got two or three calls going and they're on their own or I'm on my own because we don't have enough people, it can work both ways. It's, it's hard. And our chiefs are doing what they can do, the volunteers know what we can do, but we need the representation and support to work together to make that happen. So, you know, keep your minds open on that.
I have a suggestion.
Sure.
And I would love to see Randy Longnecker and I, along with this whole crew, to sit down and let's see, because we were asked for a, what'd they call that? Something that we were talking about that we wanted to see that we haven't seen yet. And I don't know if-
Basically, we were, we had a meeting a while back, I mean, in the public meeting, we asked-
Thanks, Art.
We asked for that roadmap. Like, if you remember, I asked you, what's, we want, what's the chief's duties? What's the assistant chief's duties and so on and so forth? What's that roadmap look like? That, that was kind of the expectation too, that we needed to see that so we know what that avenue is or where we can support that, whether it's more volunteer or whatever. Haven't seen that yet, to be honest. I don't, you know, I know we had our initial meeting, we kind of had that guideline. We talked about three guys here, you know, I was in full support too. I, you know, I told you guys-
Boys too.
You and Chewy, like, ask for the moon and hopefully you'll get the stars, right? I mean, I, I stated that, I will say that in public, I said it before, but I did ask in the previous meeting when you guys were talking about putting Chewy and the other assistant on during the days, that we got that roadmap of those positions and what that documentation is. You guys correct me if I, I'm stating something incorrect, but I asked that, did I not?
Correct.
So I just, I want everybody to know that has been asked and we will do what we can. We do, well, everybody here is going to support what we can.
Absolutely.
But we need that guideline, I mean, we're already having the budget to look for the, what the answers are on a news station or two or whatever, that's already in, in the process. So I, I guess, like, we don't want to put the cart before the horse in a sense, right? Like, we kind of need that roadmap to say, is it three, is it six, is it whatever? Is it promoting to get more volunteers and how we do that, how we bring everybody together? I don't think anybody here wants to go any other way.
So, so that roadmap you're talking about, I've committed, Steve's committed, to be our fourth quarter sprint on, uh, beginning that process. And we've already started laying some of this ground. Each quarter, we've been trying to pick out one or two what we call our sprint items. So, um, we have a lot of things to juggle all the time. And so, and like currently, for example, we're doing code enforcement and a lot of you are all involved in that, a lot of department heads are involved in this. And so that the rest of the council, I know some of you council members know that fourth quarter sprint is going to be exactly that roadmap you're talking about. But we're going to, um, dive into, there's so many things, this is a tough, tough spot. Knowing that what Lynn just told you and how do we move this needle forward on the future of, um, staffing, we're talking about the new facilities, right? And so we have that coming up. And so at the same time, we're making decisions now, um, and so I appreciate wanting the roadmap and, uh, but we're making decisions now that, especially the buildings and, and what the future looks like ten years, uh, twenty years. But we're building buildings for fifty or seventy-five years. And so how do we staff it going forward? So I'm asking you to be patient. I understand everything everybody's saying in this room and there's a lot of moving parts. And, um, I really feel like we are focused in on quarter four sprint item. Beginning October one, we've already started, I mean, we're doing it. And you're going to all, every one of you that are here in the blue and the white shirts, you're going to probably be, uh, sitting down with us. Hopefully you'll volunteer to talk to us about different things. With the help of InFocus, this is what our main goal is going in, uh, quarter four. So Steve's committed to it with me. Um, and so your roadmap is what we're really kind of be, will be doing. And then there's so many, I've got a list of things that everybody's been telling me about and they, they're all on the table. Everything is on the table to discuss and, and move the needles. And so, uh, out of that discussion, after this InFocus, as we focus on these things, hopefully at the end of it, we'll have a lot of little things that we're going to need to do, uh, to move. And if it comes, um, March, April, May next year, out of this study group, hey, we need three right away, then I will be coming and asking council for an additional appropriation. But we'll show you how we're going to do it. And that's the best we can do at this point in the game. And I do want to hear from all of you. And so if you don't want to speak tonight, you're going to have an opportunity. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to meet with you, uh, somebody from my team will meet with you. Um, possibly somebody from InFocus will meet with you. This is exactly what we're doing with code enforcement right now. We are doing a deep dive into how we as a city handle code enforcement. And, uh, anybody that touches code enforcement is part of the process. And I think at the end of this, uh, we'll have a, a great roadmap for, uh, code enforcement as well. But this is our next focus, so, um, does that make sense? Does anybody have a question on that? You're going to get a memo from me explaining that we're coming around, talking to y'all. Uh, volunteers, full-time retirees, uh, we're going to dive into a lot of things, so. I'm not going to micro, I don't know how to manage a, uh, a firehouse. I don't know that and I don't think anybody up here really does, uh, so.
Is there any reason you couldn't involve somebody from the council to be involved in those talks?
Yeah, absolutely, you can, uh, for sure.
Your honor, if I may, uh, first of all, I'm willing to participate in those conversations. Secondly, we consistently have been asking for plans that can be sustainable. Uh, to do something, we really need your, I know that we're trying to avoid this, but we need to be looking at something that we can sustain one year, three year, five year and so on, just as Randy had mentioned earlier. And I think it's important for everybody to know that we, when we make a decision, what we're talking about, for example, for tonight, it's important that we are taking into consideration the future and I'll make sure that we can keep this moving forward, as, as Chief Hollis has mentioned tonight. And we use Baker Tilly and they're the ones that can help us look out into the future when it comes to the financial side of things. So we need to continue to stay in that, in that, uh, mode, if you will, and not make these quick decisions for now, we need to maintain our vision now, but also for the future.
Also, you know, he's still open. You've got a guy in this room that has over fifty years' experience that would be great on that committee, Sean Gollum.
Well, the one thing I would bring up real quick though, Lynn, you mentioned you cut, the volunteer budget got cut. We don't get any knowledge of that. We don't get, there's no input from us on what we get, what we don't get. So that's why I say we need that representation, we need that somehow to be able to put that out there. It may not be money that excites everybody, but money might be part of it, might be other things. And we got to make sure we're part of that.
To speak to that, if you want to speak to that, Lynn, you can, but, uh, we're, that helped us get that trimming down because you have not spent that in the last five years, basically.
Well, we can.
It was, there was some villain fluff over the years in that line item. And we, to get to that, uh, get our balance, get our budget in line, we had to, was that what you were going to say?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why that happened.
Can we go to lunch tomorrow?
Well, you didn't spend it in the five years that we look back on anyway. That's why it got trimmed a little bit, that just helped the bigger picture. There's a lot of areas like that outside of fire that we did that with. They just didn't, it wasn't spent, so we had to, it all came together that way.
Did our training budget get cut?
No.
No, no.
Well, and I just, I mean, I had conversation with Chewy and, yeah, I thought did a backflip, freaked out too myself. I mean, when I found this, you know, this was cut out, I mean, yeah. But I also, again, I think that roadmap is very, it's going to be very important, like, that maybe we're going to find some other things that we need to do, maybe it's not three, maybe it's four, maybe five, like, whatever. I think, um, you know, like Don said, I don't want to do a knee jerk, but I won't screw you guys over either. But we got to, we got to figure that out.
We're still working on it and, um, this is a good process, this works and we can figure this out and-
And unfortunately, I think all of us in this room, a lot of us weren't around twenty years ago when a lot of this should have happened, right? Like, that firehouse, it's been talked about, I don't know how long, four years. We're all here to fight that issue now, that's what we're left with.
Do you live in the city, Randy?
I do.
We got volunteer spots open.
How, you know, if I wasn't teaching on the council, yeah.
There we go.
I, I do want to give anybody else an opportunity and you don't have to speak tonight, but feel free to, um, come see us or whatever. Some of you have can see me and so, um, but if you want to say something tonight, this would be- Linda, you can say what you want, yes?
I, I appreciate every one of you that came tonight, I think that speaks very well because you care. And we care too. The decisions that were made, uh, for this budget certainly weren't done without a lot of thought and, um, the stark reality that Lynn gives us about the dollar sign, that's, and that's what we've got. So, um, and the fact that we're all coming to the table with you and that can only make everything better for all of us because we'll have a better understanding of where we all are from. And we all have a common goal and that's to give the best service that we can and fairly to all of you as much. So I appreciate you being here and you are going to be heard.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you guys, thank you all for, uh, everything you do and being here tonight. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Call.
Yes.
Ecker.
Yes.
Craftwall.
Yes.
Longnecker. Milder.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Very good. Anything else from the boards this evening?
Yeah, matter of fact.
Great.
You know, I skipped a meeting, so I've got a couple of things to head up on. Uh, I had my thirtieth classroom reunion, um, last weekend and, uh, some of my classmates that hadn't been to town in ten to twenty years were, uh, excited with some of the stuff. And so we were like tourists, taking pictures of the stuff that's going on in town.
What year, what year was it?
Thai. Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to give that feedback. Um, and then I had the chance to actually, with my son, spend a minute out at the park and play the new disc golf course and it's pretty challenging, a lot of fun. We had a lot of laughs, a lot of fun, so thanks for that. And then a few meetings ago, I talked about the ballards and, on the bridges. And Mike and the park department got those installed, they're pretty nice, so I appreciate that.
Thanks, Randy, good job, Mike. Are you listening still?
Took it in there.
Anything else, anybody?
I do, uh, with the Blueberry-
The Blueberry's amazing.
With the Blueberry Festival being, uh, a thing of the past in the history books, I just want to say I am so amazed to go out like two days afterwards, drive through the park and it didn't even look like anything was there, except for Blueberry. That's everything, it looks like slightly different. And I'm impressed with how I see, um, the code enforcement being, happening in Plymouth. Uh, I've noticed a few cars that have been tagged, um, and, and just, uh, things are happening and it's not all we all know, but appreciate it very much.
Okay, moving on down, do we want to jump all the way down to new business?
Okay, so I'm going to be covering for Thai tonight on this first item. Um, that is PC twenty-two-five dash twelve, it's a certified proposal to amend the official zoning map for the city of Plymouth. And you have that certified proposal and resolution in your packets. Uh, basically, this is a property on Jefferson Street, um, just west of Jefferson Apartments, behind that single white house that is up on the street there. There's a large vacant parcel, uh, there's actually a couple of duplexes on it now. Um, Birch Meyer Rentals owns that property and they are currently finishing a duplex there, uh, closer to the street, but they would like to expand and build some additional, um, probably two to four, um, additional duplex structures there. In order to do that, they need to rezone to multifamily residential. So this went to the plan commission and they gave a unanimous favorable recommendation following the staff's favorable recommendation. It now comes to you for your consideration. Uh, you should look at five factors when considering this. The comprehensive plan, the current conditions and the character of the structures and uses in each district, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction and responsible development and growth. So based on those factors, we are requesting that you approve this amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Make the motion, we approve PC two-zero-two-five dash twelve.
Second.
Very good, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Questions? Roll call vote please.
Councilman Call.
Yes.
Ecker.
Yes.
Craftwall.
Yes.
Longnecker.
Yes.
Milder.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Okay. You didn't have anything else, did you, Lynn? Before I go on to first readings? Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Um, so you have a couple of ordinances for first reading. Ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two forty-nine, an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for twenty-twenty-six, and ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two fifty, an ordinance fixing salaries for the year twenty-twenty-six for the elected officials of the city of Plymouth, Indiana. Those are both for first readings, so no action is required. Um, I do have one additional new item that is not on your agenda. I just received notice that there is an additional opioid settlement that has been reached with some of the minor manufacturers in addition to the big settlements that we've already discussed. Uh, because of Indiana law, we do not have to take any action because Indiana as a state has opted into this new settlement. Then any municipality that has previously opted in is automatically opted into the new settlement. Um, I have no idea what it will mean for the distribution of opioid funds. I just know that there's additional money coming into the bucket. So hopefully that will mean additional money, uh, being distributed to the city of Plymouth. Uh, when I get more information, I will keep you updated, but I want to let you know that that just came through. Next item on the agenda is a one Marshall County update and I really don't have a new update for you. Uh, we have a board meeting coming up later this month, so I should have more information after that. Um, comprehensive plan update, again, Thai apologizes- Again, Ty apologizes he couldn't be here tonight. Um, really, the update that I have on that is that the subcommittees are doing phenomenal work. There are a lot of volunteers working really hard. Uh, I think Ty mentioned previously that we've already addressed a lot of the low-hanging fruit, so some of the things that the committees are working on are going to take a little longer to develop, but they continue to work. Uh, we have some zoning amendments that will be presented sometime in the future. We have some other updates. Um, I'm working on an update to the revitalization grant based on committee recommendations, and I know we have a very active marketing committee that is working on some plans for, uh, more public engagement. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have for you. Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Um, we have another opportunity here. Privilege of the floor and directed to the agenda items only, if anybody would like anything at the closing, before closing. John?
I just wanted to bring up, I didn't know I could have stood up earlier with the other, on, uh, losing two vehicles. We're, in the beginning, we talked about, uh, needing 11 vehicles immediately. I got seven last year, seven this year, and I was hoping to stick with the five vehicle every year rotation after that, because I still have, well, three vehicles right now that are over, I got 115,000 on a 2018, 111,000 on another 18, and 130,000 on a 2014, and then I got two vehicles, uh, 88, or number 88, a 2019 Durango that's at 93,000, and then a next 2020 Explorer that's at 76. And those are the ones that I was going to trade off next year to get my whole fleet under 100,000 mile. So just kind of upset on losing the rotation that I was trying to start to keep us up to date on vehicles since we were so far behind. Before, that was our rotation, was three vehicles, and that's where we got behind. Now we're going back to that, and I think that's going to put us back in the kind of wall. As far as officers, we're fully staffed, 25, that's when I started in 1999, that was what we had then. We haven't added any officers since I started. As far as our amount, we've kept it at 25. Granted, I mean, that's 20, 26 years now that we haven't increased.
We've been at 25 for that many, that long.
Yeah, well, we haven't had 25, but that's what we were allotted. When I got hired, we had 25, and then it's been up and down since then, but, um, we're fully staffed right now and hoping to stay that way, but I guess that's why we're trying to build our department back up. I mean, working on a new department's great, but all of our equipment is old, and it's what we're trying to get. I'm in the process of getting quotes for new computers, because we got three of them, our main ones, mine, the detective, and our clerical are all, we're told last week that they're not repairable anymore. So we're working on that right now, and, um, then I was just told that we need a new server, so that's something else we're looking at. So it's just, we gotta invest in our departments. But Steve said, I mean, he hit everything on the head. I mean, we just got to keep up to par. So that's just my two cents.
Appreciate it.
Hey, okay, one question on the car. I know we always keep talking mileage, right? Everybody always talks mileage, but a police car is idle. I mean, I wouldn't give you this to point out that we may have 100,000 miles, but we could have-
Oh, yeah, that's-
-on motors, which is-
200,000 on a motor.
Right. Which is continual bearing on the vehicle. It's not just miles that are wearing vehicle, it's idle. I mean, that's another thing that was the issue.
And Councilman Ecker had talked to me earlier about, uh, looking at the hybrids, because we did buy that one hybrid the first of the year. It got on the road in April, and he has about 10,000 miles on it, and I figured out the mileage so far is averaging 17 to 19 miles a gallon is what they average. The rest of our squads are right at 10 to 13. That's everyday average mileage for our squad.
So those are a hybrid, are they, uh, are they running at any point, or are they just, do they, like, my, my truck, like, idles or whatever, it'll take the engine off? I mean, electronics don't work, they-
Yeah, Sergeant West, I mean, he's probably one of our highest patrol, I mean, he averages close to, right around 30,000 miles a year patrolling. So that's a lot of idle time. I haven't looked at the hours on it yet to figure out, you know, that stuff, because I gotta-
So those hybrids, when they, when they're idle though, they shut off?
The, they're not running on the engine, they're running on the battery.
That's what you're talking about, running the engine. So that's a good thing.
It could be a good thing.
Yeah.
Like our K9 vehicle, I think that would be an excellent vehicle for a K9, now seeing how this is working with this, because our K9 is probably the one that runs, I mean, the whole shift. It does not get turned off with the dog in there, because it's got to stay temporarily controlled.
Well, then, can you, can the air still work when it shuts down?
Yeah.
To an extent, yeah.
And then, after so long, you know, it'll kick the engine back on.
Oh, okay.
Right, because it's got to build that charge back up.
So it's getting better gas mileage, plus it won't run the engine as long, so hybrid.
I just think it's something-
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so far, we haven't had any issues. Like I said, we only have 10,000 miles on it, maybe a little bit more, but-
I talked to him, and I, he was happy with the performance of the-
Yeah, yeah, he says it great, Evot Corp and everything, so-
He even said, sitting down at the accident scenes, when he's recovering an accident on 30, he, he said that car turns on and off and it stays climate depending on where you set it off the gauges, so he said he loves it, so.
Yeah, so that was what we're going to probably be looking at next, for our next purchases, but looking like only three of them right now, not saying nothing.
Yep, thank you, John. Number eight, acceptance of communications.
Move to accept communications. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry, man. And number nine.
It's a judge.
Motion to adjourn.
Very good. Thank you.